All right, Mr. Mayor, it is 1:00 and we are ready when you are.
Thank you. Good afternoon. It is Thursday, May 6 at 1:00. This is the regular meeting of the City Council, the Library and Observatory Board, Housing Authority Board, and the City Council representing the Redevelopment Successor Agency. Isaiah, would you lead us in a flag salute, please?
Yeah, I'm going to have Kofi Antabom, our Director of Administrative Services, lead us today. Kofi?
Thank you. Thank you, Kofi. Kristi, may we have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Councilmember Hobart?
Present.
Councilmember Kite?
Here.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Townsend?
Here.
Mayor Weil?
Here.
The first item on our agenda today is a presentation which is the 2021 A&amp;A Inspiration Recap, and that will be presented to us today by Elisa Randolph, Director of Golf of IMG Events. Elisa, welcome if you would.
Well, thank you so much, and thank you to the city of Rancho Mirage for having me here today to speak on behalf of the A&amp;A Inspiration. We appreciate your continued partnership as we've worked together to successfully host golf's first major here in Rancho Mirage for 50 years. The only other event that has continued to host the same venue or town is the Masters in Augusta, Georgia, so I think we're in good company. Before we go into our 50th celebration on the LPGA's first major championship, our 50th celebration looked different than what we imagined in the years of planning for it. In both 2020 and 2021, we hosted the event without spectators in coordination with state and local guidelines and also as a social responsibility in our community. As health and safety has remained the number one priority pre-pandemic and also during, we still wanted to deliver a world-class major championship for the athletes and for our local and global fans. As we kept pivoting, trying to understand what the event would look like, our global viewers would be consuming and experiencing the event like we never understood before and very different, only through streaming, through digital, and through broadcasts. So we knew we had to bridge that gap between the history and the rich tradition that we had and the onsite behind the scenes despite being behind closed doors. So as we celebrated 50 years of stories, each one was so different for each 50 champions, but a couple of things remain the same: our home here in Rancho Mirage, and also Dinah Shore and David Foster who paved the path. So as I would love to tell those 50 stories, I think a video will do a little bit better.
The stage, a green oasis; the players, the best lady golfers in their galleries; the audience, America's television bureau.
This one stands out almost above the rest of the women's golf.
It is a place that has a home, and it is something then that you yearn to see year after year after year.
So through these stories and our 50th celebration, we saw a tremendous positive reception of this. An average of 228,000 average viewers tuned in the broadcast domestically, which is up 20, 32% when compared to 2019's event as we go back into our schedule of similar timing. Over 1.36 billion users were reached throughout our social platforms. As we wait for more international data to come in, our telecast is distributed to over 165 global territories. Here on the map shown, you can see that breakout. And during the tournament week only, through only LPGA channels, on the 50th anniversary of the A&amp;A Inspiration, 5.3 million people around the world consume content across linear, social, streaming, and web, up 32.5%. Additionally, we grew across streaming. We were up 7% in time watching spent by the viewer and up 9% on the number of people watching through streaming devices. We were up 1.3 million views on videos across LPGA's social channels and also up 9,000 videos views on lpga.com. As our viewers and consumers and global footprint continue to grow around the world, we believe this growth is directly attributable to the new content we provided during the rise of women's sports: diversity, equity, and inclusion, but also in growing interest for the 2021 Olympic Games to be held in Tokyo this summer. In under eight weeks, we will understand the LPGA athletes that are headed and qualified to the Tokyo Olympic Games. Our very own 2021 champion Patty Tavataniket, who played in the A&amp;A Junior Inspiration, was an amateur invite in the 2017 and 2019 A&amp;A Inspiration, leads qualifying for her home country, Thailand. We also look forward to celebrating with our title sponsor, A&amp;A Onopon Airways, as they host the Olympic Games in their hometown in Tokyo, and we hope to watch our 2021 champion win a gold medal. You can tune in to the Tokyo Olympics as the women's golf portion will air on NBC August 4 through 7. And as we look forward to the next 50 years of the A&amp;A Inspiration, we look forward to hosting fans back again in 2022, March 30 through April 3 in Rancho Mirage at Mission Hills Country Club. Thank you so much for your time today and for having me, and I also have a couple of things for your trophy case and for you to take home, which I'll hand to Kristi. Thank you.
Thank you, Elisa. IMG did a great job. You talk about pivoting. The last year has sure been a succession of pivots for everyone, but the program came off magnificently, and it showed off our beautiful city, and it makes us proud to be a major sponsor of the A&amp;A. And so we thank you so very much, and we also look forward to the tournament next year. So thank you again.
Thank you.
I believe that our next agenda item, if you would, Isaiah, is our non-agenda public comments, and if you would handle that, please.
Sure. We'll go ahead and open up our non-agenda public comment period. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to speak on issues that are not on today's agenda for a maximum of three minutes per speaker. If you are participating remotely and you would like to make a non-agenda public comment, now is the time to do so. You would hit the raise hand button on Zoom, or if you're participating by telephone, you would hit star nine on your telephone to indicate that you'd like to make a non-agenda public comment. Before we go to our remote audience, is there anyone here in person that would like to make a non-agenda public comment? Okay, seeing no one here in person, let's go to our remote audience, and we have Julie Bank, the Director of Riverside County Department of Animal Services.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's very nice to be able to speak with you today. I have the pleasure of participating on the animal campus commission of the Coachella Valley with Councilmember Hobart, and we had a meeting this morning where we were speaking about a whole bunch of items that are new and available for your constituents, so he had suggested that I come on here and share them with you today. I specifically want to talk with you about a new program that we have called the Healthy Pet Zone, and we shorten that for HPZ. And the HPZ program is a grant-funded program that is providing resources and services to those pet owners in crisis who are interested in keeping their pets. So we have quite a few programs available to individuals, including a pet food bank, temporary boarding for those in crisis, assistance with behavior support, assistance with spay neuter, vaccines, microchipping, and wellness and medical care services, and a variety of other supplies that we can make available to individuals in the field and at our shelter location. As I said before, this program is grant-funded, so we were able to secure some funding and have already been able to provide the resources to the constituents in the communities across all of Riverside County. Anyone who has a need or is in need of help, we want to help you keep your pet, so we encourage you to visit our website at rcdas.org. I also want to share that this is the time of the year where we start getting inundated with animals. It's baby season, and we see lots of moms and babies and babies without moms, and we are pleading to the community for some support. And the support we are looking for right now is in the need of becoming foster parents. We have lots of animals that could be saved if we can place them in your home. We will provide you with the training and all of the supplies that you need. All we need you to do is provide some time and some love, and then when they're available for adoption, if you're not interested in adopting them, they can come back and then we can place them up for adoption and find homes. We have foster care opportunities for not only cats, but for dogs. And before I end, I would be remiss if I didn't remind everybody that we have some amazing animals that are looking for new families and are available for adoption. And this is the time that if you have time during the summer to bring a new family pet into your home, again, you could see pictures of animals that are available for adoption and learn more about all of these programs at our website at rcdas.org. Thank you so much for being our partner. We're really thrilled with the partnership and the work that we do together, and now is the time that there are animals that need the community's help, and thank you for letting me share that with you today.
Well, thank you, Julie. It's a wonderful service, and we're proud to be a partner with you on that. It's just great. Thank you so much.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right, the next speaker is Brad Anderson.
Hi, yes, good afternoon. My name is Brad Anderson. I currently live in the city, and I just wanted to hit a few items today, take a little bit of your time up. At the prior city council meeting, I asked for special attention from the city council for administrative citations that's issued to the city to look into that matter because I know it's being misused by co-compliance and also the legal council, and it really needs to be addressed because it's really a blank slip for retaliation, and the common homeowner wouldn't have any alternatives except to spend thousands in legal fees for $100 in citations. So anyway, please look into those. I mean, a couple of years ago, I approached the city council with the city co-compliance issuing citations, administrative citations to vacant lots and sale homes and misusing the vector control district's abatement warrant to enter access and issuing citations where the vector control already took care of it. So there's issues there, and that's all legal issues, but please look into that. That's really important to me. And one other thing, I brought this up before about the legal council. I think it's time to maybe put that out for bid and see if we can get any other takers. I think the city would be better served by another legal council. And one more thing, the dark park. I happened to be out there, a couple of weeks ago, I happened to walk through there. I've never been to the park, but I do walk by it, and I noticed in the display case that people make donations, and I've done that, and you get your name on a little tag and all that. And apparently mine's not there and some other people's, and it looks like it's not retained, or maybe they're in the case. But anyway, that's something to look at, and one big thing is all the dog defecation bags that you have, the wind blows through there and they blow into the open field next door, and maybe some kind of wind fence to catch all that litter, because that litter's coming from the park, so that should really be addressed. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Seeing no one else, that's indicated that they'd like to make a non-agenda public comment. I will return this to you, Mr. Mayor, for council comments.
Thank you, Isaiah. I'll remind my colleagues just a little housekeeping. Remain on mute unless you are speaking. I'll start. Charlie, do you have any council comments?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. With the county of Riverside moving into the moderate tier, the city of Rancho Mirage is bringing back live entertainment to the Rancho Mirage Amphitheater, and that is in partnership with the city of Rancho Mirage, Desert Theaticals presents Live Cabaret Under the Stars. Enjoy an evening of Broadway-style cabaret every Saturday starting May 8 through June 5, and it's al fresco dining at the beautiful Rancho Mirage Amphitheater. Social distancing tables of four on sale now at www-deserttheaticals.com, with a total of 250 seats available per show. Dinner will be provided by Aqua California Bistro and includes a salad, an entree, your choice of protein or vegetarian, a dessert, and a glass of wine per attendee, all served and enjoyed under the stars. Additional beer, wine, and cocktails available for purchase, a unique dining experience for each show. Gate will open at 6:15 PM. Dinner will be served at 7:00 PM, and the show begins at 8:00 PM. Complimentary valet parking is also available at the West Gate. Ticket price is $260 per show for a table of four, which includes, as I said, the dinner and the show. The running time of all shows is 55 minutes. On Saturday, May 8, Early Neil Diamond is a new Neil Diamond Tribute Theater show starring singer, songwriter, and performer/artist Jason Lorkey. The performance is sold out. Next, however, you can attend on Saturday, May 15, an evening with Valerie Perry. Valerie made her professional state debut in 1979 starring as Eva Peron in the Broadway National Company of Evita under legendary director Harold Rice. On Saturday, May 22, you have a choice to visit and be with. The Mont Squad Variety Show features favorite local singers Francesca Amari with Jeff Stewart and music maestro and Broadway veteran Wayne Rovnick on the piano. On Saturday, May 29, Scott Ryer in Doris and Me. Scott brings the music of Doris Day in a one-man show celebrating the music and career of the legendary, wonderful Doris Day. And in conclusion, the Saturday, June 5 final show will be an evening with Jonathan Karat and Joshua White. Audiences have characterized Jonathan as a great interpreter of song, a storyteller, a singer who brings music and lyric alive. It has been said that he sings standards with an emotional weight that makes it seem as if he had written the song himself. So again, visit deserttheaticals.com for complete details and reservations on a first-come, first-served basis, or you can call the city of Rancho Mirage at 760-324-4511. The Rancho Mirage Amphitheater is located at 71560 San Jacinto Drive in the beautiful city of Rancho Mirage. And, Mr. Mayor, we are so excited to see Desert Theaticals bringing back these wonderful programs. It's just the beginning. Thank you.
Absolutely. What a delightful way to spend a Saturday. Absolutely fabulous. Thanks, Charlie. Iris, do you have any comments?
Nothing from me today. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. Richard?
That's me, Ted. Hey, good afternoon, and thank you, everyone. I wanted to bring to you another exciting series of events, beginning on Wednesday, May 12, and continuing each Wednesday thereafter until June 2. The city of Rancho Mirage and Satisfied Being Meditation and Mindfulness will offer free guided meditation at the Rancho Mirage Amphitheater. Relax and enjoy peaceful sounds and images designated to create a harmonious amphitheater meditation practitioner speech. We will have life spiritual coach Jens Christian Springmann, owner of Satisfied Being Meditation and Mindfulness in Rancho Mirage, for this relaxing experience. So mark your calendars and go to www.swarisranchemarage.com to register for one of these wonderful guided meditations. Well, that's two great events coming up in Rancho Mirage at the amphitheater. Hope everybody will join in and welcome back their amphitheater to its great status. So, Mayor, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Richard, let me ask you this. Richard, is snoring allowed when you're meditating?
As long as it's a medicated snore, you can do it.
All right, great. Thank you. Dana, do you have any council comments? Dana, you're on mute.
I do have a brief statement. Am I off mute now?
Yes, you are.
Okay, great. I attended via Zoom a meeting this morning of the Coachella Valley Animal Campus. Officials from the county and officials from Palm Springs spoke to the dire needs of both shelters. Both entities have inadequate funding caused by COVID-19 and animal owners becoming ill or dying. But regardless of the lack of adequate funding, the problems of homeless dogs and cats continue to spiral upward. There are only two ways to help improve the situation. One, adopt a dog or cat. Two, help financially. Both shelters are in dire need for financial assistance. You can reach the county by telephone, 760-343-3644. You can telephone the Palm Springs Animal Shelter at 760-416-5718. I'm suggesting that Rancho Mirage donate $1,000 to each shelter, and I'm suggesting that each person who resides in Rancho Mirage or in Palm Springs make a donation to the shelter. It could not be more needed. I mean, you are literally saving lives if you make contributions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dana. Worthwhile cause. I'll make a brief comment. I had the honor on Tuesday of representing the city and our council at the groundbreaking for the expansion of the Betty Ford Center. The Betty Ford Center was built in 1982, and this will be a $30 million expansion on the Eisenhower campus. The Betty Ford Foundation is separate and apart from Eisenhower Health. However, those two entities are the single largest employer in our city. Between the two, there's give or take about 6,000 employees, so it's a major component of our city, and it's actually one of the reasons that attracts a lot of people to take up the residency in Rancho Mirage, is they want to be close to good medical care. The Betty Ford was represented by Susan Ford Vales, the daughter of the president, the late president, and it was a very emotional, actually, presentation that she made because it was approximately the 10th anniversary of the passing of the prior First Lady. The expansion will increase the number of beds to 240, and the total square footage, which is significant, is 170,000 square feet. That's very, very large, and if you ever have the opportunity to take a tour of the campus, it's quite magnificent. You feel like you're on a college campus. It's done beautifully, and this will be a project that takes basically four years. One of the things that people are not aware of is, of course, Betty Ford was started and was famous for basically people that had alcoholic addiction, and it went from alcohol to all sorts of drug addictions. And one of the comments that was made is that the amount of mental health as a result of the pandemic that will be seeking and have sought need is as a result of isolation and loneliness during this pandemic. And the foundation itself, which is directed by Chris Yardron here, Chris is the West Regional Vice President, talks about with great passion what they do. Not only do they take care of those people that have an addiction, but there's also a family program for children 13 and older, and in addition to that, a children's program, a support for children from the ages of seven to 12. So they do fabulous So they do fabulous work. It's, again, another reason that we're so proud to live in Rancho Mirage and to have such an incredible facility here in our city. So to the Betty Ford people, congratulations, and we look forward to your continuing help and our partnership with you. With that, Isaiah, I will ask if the city manager has any comments.
Not today, Mr. Mayor.
All right. If not, then I'll go to the minutes and ask if there have been any calls or comments regarding today's minutes. Christie, have you received any comments of any kind?
No, Mayor, I have not.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I moved it to approve the minutes in the April 15th general meeting.
Go ahead, Charlie.
I will second. Richard is first.
All right. Christie, we have a motion and a second, if you will, please.
Councilmember Hobart?
Yes.
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Wile?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, Christie. Now for the consent calendar, Isaiah, if you'll take care of that, please.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. You have six items on your consent calendar today for consideration. Item number one is to waive the full reading of all ordinances introduced or adopted pursuant to this agenda. Item number two is extension of completion date for track map number 36809-4 Del Webb Rancho Mirage. Item number three is the Rancho Mirage Energy Authority to approve and attest the 2019 Power Source Disclosure Form. Item number four is to receive and file the March 31st, 2021 Quarterly Treasures Report. Item number five are contracts, and item number six are demands. At this time, if any member of the public would like to make a comment on any of the consent calendar items, now is the time to do so. If you are participating remotely, you would hit the raise hand button or star nine on your telephone to make a public comment on the consent calendar. Before we go to our remote audience, is there anyone here in person that would like to make a comment on the consent calendar? Okay, seeing no one here in person, we will go to our remote audience. And we'll, I don't see anyone indicating that they would like to make a public comment on the consent calendar, Mr. Mayor, so we will close that portion, and I'll turn it back to the council for comments, questions, or a motion.
All right. Thank you, Isaiah. Is there anyone on the council that would like to make a comment regarding the consent calendar?
They approve it.
All right. There's a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
A second, yes.
And there's a second by Iris. Christie, if you'll take a roll call, please.
Councilmember Hobart?
Yes.
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Wile?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
All right. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the consideration of resolutions and ordinance regarding the formation of Community Facilities District Number 4C Del Webb, and that's going to be handled by Kofi Antabom. Kofi, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Consistent with the approved development agreement for the Del Webb project, on April 1st, 2021, the council approved resolution numbers 2021-14 and 2021-15, which called for the public hearing we are conducting today. The purpose of today's public hearing is to establish Community Facilities District Number 4C Del Webb Project. You may recall that the entire Del Webb project is anticipated to be developed in six phases under three separate CFDs. The proposed actions today cover the last, the two final phases of the project, which represents 378 single-family homes. As part of the development of the Del Webb project, there are significant public improvements that are being made, and under this process, some of the improvements will be financed with bond proceeds coming, that will be coming from a future debt issuance specific to CFD 4C to be repaid by the property owners within its boundaries. This debt in question, it's not an obligation of the city. Annually, the debt service requirements will be assessed onto property tax rolls to fund the debt service. In anticipation, it is anticipated that the CFD tax will range from $800 to $1,723 per year, depending on the home size. All homeowners are notified during the purchase process of the special taxes that will be, that they will be responsible for during the home buying process. The debt in question is estimated not to exceed $9 million for this phase of the project, and it is expected to be issued in early July, early 2022. All actions will come back to the council for review and approval relating to this debt. There is no fiscal impact to the city as a result of this process. A waiver and consent regarding election time limits was provided to the city by the property owner in accordance with the Melrose Act. So a special election can be called this afternoon to authorize the levy of the special taxes, the issuance of debt, and an appropriations limit for the CFD in question. Staff recommends approval of the actions as outlined in the staff report. With us today is John Zimmerman, representing the developer, and Kurt Decrenis, the financial advisor for the city, who are both on Zoom, and they are available to answer any questions that council may have. That concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Kofi. We'll go ahead and open up the public hearing on this item. So if any member of the public would like to participate in the public hearing, now is the time to do so. If you are participating remotely, you would hit the raise hand button on the Zoom platform, or if you're on your phone, you would hit star nine to make a public comment at this time. Before we go to our remote audience, we'll start with the people here in person. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing no one here in person, we will return to our remote audience. All right. I am not seeing anyone in the remote audience either that would like to make a comment during the public hearing. So, Mr. Mayor, I will go ahead and return this to you and the council.
All right. Thank you, Isaiah. Is there anybody on the council that would like to make a comment regarding this issue? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for just items A, B, and C.
If you wish, I will make that motion, Mayor.
Please.
That the city council, A, adopt resolution number 2021, next in order, establishing City of Rancho Mirage Community Facilities District Number 4C Del Webb Project, and providing for the levy of a special tax therein to finance the acquisition and construction of certain public facilities. B, adopt resolution number 2021, next in order, deeming it necessary to incur bonded indebtedness to finance the acquisition and construction of certain public facilities within the City of Rancho Mirage Community Facilities District Number 4C Del Webb Project. And C, adopt resolution number 2021, next in order, calling special mail ballot election within the City of Rancho Mirage Community Facilities District Number 4C Del Webb Project.
All right.
Second motion.
There's a motion and a second. Christie, if you would, roll call.
Councilmember Hobart?
Yes.
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Wile?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, Christie. Now, has there been a certification of the election results?
Yes, Mayor, I have that here, and I'll read it for you.
Thank you.
The ballot for the 63 eligible votes was received on April 27th, 2021, and was in favor. Therefore, votes cast in favor equal 100% of total votes cast.
Okay, so the election results have been certified. I will now ask for a motion, unless anybody has any comments, for items D and E.
If you wish, I will continue. That the city council, D, adopt resolution number 2021, next in order, declaring results of special mail ballot election within the City of Rancho Mirage Community Facilities District Number 4C Del Webb Project. And E, introduce ordinance number, next in order, first reading leveling special taxes within the City of Rancho Mirage Community Facilities District Number 4C Del Webb Project.
And I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, if you would. Christie, roll call.
Councilmember Hobart?
Yes.
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Wile?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the award of contract to Infrastructure Management Services LLC for the preparation of a pavement maintenance program, and Ryan Stindell, Public Works Director, will handle that. Ryan, if you would.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. Ryan Stindell, your newly brought-on Public Works Director. It's a pleasure to be here. Staff is recommending approval of a contract with Infrastructure Management Services for the, to work with staff in preparing a pavement maintenance program. A pavement maintenance program, which I'll try and get my presentation up, is a data-driven approach to help staff in understanding what is the asset we're trying to maintain in our total road and streets network? What's the existing condition of that asset? And the ultimate goal is to be able to inform the policymakers as to what kind of resources, dollars, it's going to take annually to make sure that we're keeping our streets in the tip-top condition, whether it's today or 20 years from today. Infrastructure Management Services uses some of the highest technology equipment out there to go out and survey the existing roadway network using LiDAR and other technology. You'll see vehicles like this traversing through town, collecting data on our existing roadways, lengths, widths, even detailed information on the cracks that exist within the pavement, or irregularities in pavement can be detected with this equipment. And I highlight, this piece of equipment is one we're going to try and keep away from certain staff members, but you may see it during certain portions of the program, to collect data on our roadways. Once IMS collects that information, they use several softwares and spreadsheets to identify the existing condition report to the city. What is our pavement condition today, and what standard of care does a council desire in maintaining their roads and streets now and into the future? The images I'm showing right now are some of the images that come out of the survey showing you where your cracks exist. Those translate into drawings like this that show you how big they are and irregularities with, say, manhole covers or other equipment that's located in the roads. The end product, the deliverable to the city, is a database full of extremely useful information. Roadway lengths, widths, striping locations, square footages, pavement cracks and condition reports, all things that are intended to give staff tools when, and providing councils with trust when we're making recommendations of spending dollars maintaining our roads, that it's backstopped by credible information. So with that, I wish that I could take credit for the entire process, but this was started many months ago by then-director Jesse Eckenroth, who's been a great help to me and continues to send his regards to the council and staff as he helps me through, continues to help me through our transition. That concludes staff's report. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have about this request. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. We'll go ahead and open up the public comment period on this item. If you'd like to make a public comment on this item, now's the time to do so. If you are participating remotely, you would hit the raise hand button on Zoom. If you're on your telephone, you would hit star nine to make a public comment on this item. Before we go to our remote audience, is there anyone here in person that would like to make a comment on this item? Okay, seeing no one here in person, we will go to our remote audience. And Brad Anderson, go ahead.
Yes, hi, Brad Anderson, City of Rancho Mirage. I meant it Spanish because I did a read through the complete city report on this, but my understanding, because I was waiting for the staff report, and it's kind of what I thought it would be. I'm opposed to this because this city's Public Works Department is outstanding, and it's well aware of all the streets that we have and every issue that impacts that street. And this, I think it's like 57,000, something like that. It's just, especially during this state of emergency, resources should be conserved, and this would be, I think, a waste of resources. It's not, it's not a waste of information. I think it's valuable information, but our city staff should already have that information and already have a plan for this, which I know they do. So, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I'm not seeing anyone else that has indicated that they would like to speak on this item, so we'll close the public comment period, and I will return this to you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Isaiah. I will say this, that our streets are probably one of the things that we take the greatest pride in in our city. We are constantly getting compliments on how they're maintained, how smooth they are, the lower decibel levels and so forth. So I think it's, you know, certainly a worthwhile endeavor. With that, I'll ask my colleagues if they have any comments they would like to make.
Just one question there.
Yes, Richard.
Ryan, is this a new program for the city, or is this something that we have been doing over a period of time?
Ryan, would you like to answer that, or?
Sure, absolutely. This builds on existing data that staff has been using and takes it to the next level. So this, to directly answer, this is new, but it gives us more detailed information than we currently have at a staff level.
Thank you. Any other comments of any kind?
Can you see me or hear me?
Yes, I can.
Yeah. I would like to know, has any other valley city undertaken this project?
So I'm aware of at least one other valley city that's taken on this project. I would assume that many others have, but I don't have direct knowledge. A program like this is very common in today's world of public works.
If we had, if we extended our interest in this out another five years, not doing anything now, how would you describe what you think the effect of that would be on the city five years hence?
So I think what I'm hearing you ask is if we didn't do this, where would we be in five years?
Right.
And if I'm characterizing that correctly, I think we'd still be in a good place. I think what I've observed with pavement condition index reports in the past is that cities are oftentimes not realizing how much they should be allocating towards pavement maintenance on an annual basis to make sure that we truly do leave our roads as good as they are today into the future. So if, as indicated by many, many public comments, Rancho Mirage is held in very high regard for its streets and roads. I think five years from now, without this report, we'd still be in that place. Five years from now, if we did this report, maybe we're in a better place. That's what I, the only real assurances I can give you.
Well, I don't have, I certainly don't quarrel with the value of the project. I just wonder, from an economic point of view, whether this is a strategic time for our city to get involved with the project.
So one of the advantages, I think, that staff sees with this is, obviously, when the state dissolved RDAs, the RDA did take on a big financial load of maintaining our roadways. Now that we no longer have that, resources are strapped, cost of construction's always going up. And so what this program will enable us to do is make better informed decisions. And so, you know, I know we're asking for roughly fifty-four thousand dollars, but you make one ill-informed decision on one of your street projects, and it will easily overcome that amount. So there's also an element of utilizing our limited resources on our streets wisely, and how you do that is with data. So there is a component here of having more information about what exactly that street will take to maintain, and don't go out and do a big project of totally redoing the street if the pavement condition doesn't warrant that. So this also likely will help us be more efficient with our resources and put it into our streets where we need it. So this is also going to be a tool to help us be more efficient at a staff level and make sure that our limited road money is going to where it should be.
Mr. Mayor, if I may make a, make a.
Can I finish my?
Oh, sorry, Mayor. Go ahead.
Yeah, I want, in speaking to Isaiah, Isaiah, what do you think the effect would be if we delayed it three years? I mean, I'm thinking in terms of the expenses that are extraordinary, that we're facing currently, and will probably continue to face for a while. I can see the value in the project. I just don't see it as being urgent enough to take priority over some of the other expenditures that we'll be meeting along the way.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, from the staff perspective, I guess what I'm trying to communicate is, over the next three years, if you make a decision on a project without having some of this data, you have the potential to do improvements that are not necessary. And so you will, in essence, could run the risk over the next three years of wasting ten times the amount of resources redoing streets because, you know, the methodology and the data has sometimes just been, how long has it been since we've redone the street? Well, there's many factors and conditions that will affect the asphalt on a street. So you could have one street that is more heavily traveled, and you get this data, and it tells you, you need to do more work, or more preventative work on that street, versus another street that doesn't have as much travel on it, and the pavement condition is still in good condition. So what this will do is, you know, it takes our analysis of roadways out of something that is kind of elementary at this point of, how long has it been since we've redone the roadway, to actually getting real data of what's the pavement condition, and then what do you need to go do for that street? So, and this is not general fund dollars. We're using our street and road money. So this isn't conflicting with public safety or programming of the city. We have to use this money for these purposes. So we think that this is a very wise use of our road money, because it's, over the next three to five years, is like, is going to save us money, having more data on what is the current condition of our street, and then also, what do we need to do into the future to maintain our roadways? So right now, I think that's a component that we don't have at all. We can tell you right now, yeah, we go in and this road's, you know, here's our schedule, every six years, we're going to go do this, and we can show you a map. But really, from a financial perspective, you know, the big advantage to this is it says, all right, you know, some roads are going to be rated differently than others, and here's what you need to do for these roads to bring them up to your standards, and then here's what you're going to need to do on your roadways to keep them at this standard. And then there's a dollar value associated with that, and it enables the city, I think, to plan better into the future.
Thank you. I think the fact that Isaiah mentioned that these funds are already in a road maintenance account, and it's not coming out with a general fund, so that these dollars will not be taken away from the consideration of another project that would call upon general funds, I think is meaningful to some degree. Richard or Charlie, did you have something you wanted to say earlier?
Yes, yes, Mayor, I do. I just want to say that we have a wonderful Public Works Department, and that is their job to see and look into all things that make the city as great as it is, and keep the infrastructure in good repair. And I just will say that the old adage, revenge is worth a pound of gold. And I know this well. In my community, the board here has let this go on and go on and go on, and not putting money back into the roads. With the latest estimate now to fix them is two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand. If they'd acted five years back, it would have been fifty. So I just say, I lean to the opinion of our Public Works Department that I hold in the highest esteem. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Richard?
Mr. Mayor, I think when you talk to people from outside the city, the one element everybody talks about in the quality is our streets. And we have probably done a better job than anybody else, and we've spent the money to make it good. So I think we have to look at where we are spending our money, and what the residents are receiving for it. And again, it's quality of life, and we have made the quality of our life and our residents better than it's ever been.
Yeah, I can echo, I can echo that. I hear those comments quite frequently. Does anyone?
Okay, just to add my, my, my comment, just to clarify what Isaiah is saying, that by the more careful analysis that we're going to be doing on our streets, we will very often possibly save money by not paving streets that, just because they're on the schedule, if they don't really need it. So by this type of analysis, and the data that we're going to obtain, and the machinery that is available, our analysis is going to be a lot more substantial and a lot more clear as to where we need to spend our dollars. Does that sound like what you're saying, Isaiah?
Yes, it does.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any other comments? If not, I will ask for a motion regarding this item.
Okay, I'll make the motion that the City Council award a contract for the preparation of a pavement maintenance program to Infrastructure Management Services LLC, IMS, in an amount not to exceed fifty-four thousand, three-hundred-ninety-two dollars.
I'll second that. Kristi, there's a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hobart?
Obsteing.
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Wile?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero, with Councilmember Hobart abstaining.
Okay, the next item will be the Coronavirus Disease Two Thousand Nineteen, COVID-nineteen Updates, and our city manager, Isaiah Hagerman, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm actually going to hand this off to Gabe Cottin, our Director of Marketing. Gabe?
Thank you, Mr. Hagerman, Mr. Mayor, City Council, staff, attendees. We're here today to give an update, our monthly update, and then also, we do have a couple action items and specific requests. First one being that we approve the face covering ordering that we do at each, each meeting for the month. This, again, aligns us with the state's guidance for use of face coverings. That's, and that would extend it through June third, so from today through the next meeting, first meeting into June. There's also, the CDC's recently come out with some, some additional guidance that kind of relaxes the current standards. It's largely speculated that California may make a move in the next couple weeks and change their guidance. So part B of this authorizes the city manager between this meeting and the first meeting in June to update that face covering to align with any state guidelines that may change within that month. So those are the two requested recommendations that are in front of you. In addition, just wanted to kind of highlight a couple of the programs that are going on. We still remain in the orange tier. We'll need to be, we'll need to meet the yellow tier matrix for a couple of weeks before we actually move into the yellow tier. So it's speculated that we'll be in the orange tier for a couple more weeks. And then also, the Great Plates Program is, we have not received word from FEMA yet. It's supposed to, it's supposed to expire tomorrow, so kind of fingers crossed that it may get extended. We're prepared, and we've kind of prepped our restaurants and residents that it may not be. But as of, we sit here right now, we have not received word that it will be extended, and it's expiring tomorrow. However, the program has been going on, thanks to the council and, and your approval. The program's gone on for one full year, and as we sit here today, over three-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand meals have been delivered to, to the doors of over three-hundred-and-seventy-one participants. Five hundred, over almost six hundred total residents have been in and out of the program throughout this past year. But that's delivered a total of funds to local Rancho Mirage restaurants in excess of seven million. So it hits the one-year mark this week. And in addition to that, our no-cost COVID testing continues at the Rancho Mirage Library and Observatory into date. We've done a little over thirty-nine thousand tests since December first, and we continue to average around a hundred, between a hundred and a hundred and fifty tests a day. So that is scheduled to stay in place until the end of May, as long as demand is, for the testing remains. That's all I have for updates here. I'm here available to answer any questions regarding the face covering order and recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Question for Gabe, please?
Yes.
Gabe, when, when somebody comes in and gets a test, hasn't had one before, presumably, gets a test, is there anything we do or can do that will encourage them to be propelled toward getting actually vaccinated? The test is, seems to me, has one objection, one objective, and that is to get ultimate examples of where you shift over from the testing to the actual receipt of a test, of a vaccination. What, what do we do to encourage that aspect?
Yeah, so a couple things, right? So the Curative Group that we partner with for testing also conducts the counties, some of the county sites. So the Palm Springs Vaccination Site and the Indio Vaccination Site are conducted by Curative. So obviously, that information's passed on to test. Now, you don't get the test, when somebody gets tested, they don't get the results right away. So the communication back to, you know, back to, you know, to the test, the person that took the test, whether the results come back, the information now is everywhere. You can go to your primary doctor, you can go to Eisenhower, you can go to CVS, just announced yesterday. So vaccines are widely available. The county continues to communicate that there are appointments that are going unused, so you don't even need an appointment anymore. You don't even need to live in Riverside County. So the vaccines are everywhere. So now the message has been turning specifically from the county side, is to just, is to kind of battle the hesitancy of people that would, are hesitant about getting the vaccine. We continue in our weekly e-blast, continue to let people know where and when it's available, and the most current information from there, but specifically targeting people that may have tested at the site. Curative does communicate with them. We don't, per HIPAA laws, we don't have that information to be able to communicate specifically with them. But I know Curative is doing both testing and vaccines. So I don't know if that directly answers your question, but that's kind of the information that's out there right now.
It does, and we play an extraordinarily important role, just informing them, getting them the information. I just would like to see it go faster around the country. Thank you very much, Gabe.
I know this. We have a lot of very, very appreciative residents that have benefited by the Great Plates Program, those that have special medical conditions or have limited mobility as far as getting out for their marketing. And the number of restaurants that we've supported has been quite amazing. So it's fabulous program. Congratulations to everyone at the city that has worked so hard on it. Any other comments of any of my colleagues? If not, we will need a motion for.
Mr. Mayor?
Or?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Before the council moves to a motion, I would like to do the public comment on this item.
Okay, good, go ahead.
Okay. So if any member of the public would like to speak on this item, now's the time to do so. If you are participating remotely, you would hit the raise hand button on Zoom, or if you're on the telephone, you would hit star nine to make a comment on this item. Before we go to our remote audience, is there anyone here in person that would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one here in person, we will move to our remote audience. And I'm not seeing anyone that has indicated that they would like to make a public comment, so I'll close the public comment and turn this back to you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Isaiah. Unless one of my colleagues has a comment that they would like to make, I will call for a motion on this item.
Well, then, I will make the motion that the City Council A, approve the extension of the face covering order, requiring face covering be worn in accordance with the November sixteen, two thousand twenty, guidance for the use of face masks coverings issued by the California Department of Public Health through June third, two thousand twenty-one. B, authorize the city manager to issue an updated face covering order to align with any updated state guidance or mandates that align with CDC guidance, if amended prior to the existing order expiring on June third, two thousand twenty-one, and C, take any action deemed necessary.
And I'll second that.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Kristi, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hobart?
Yes.
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Wile?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, thank you. That, that leaves us with the closed session agenda by our learned council. Mr. Quintanilla, nice to see you, sir. And if you would review all the wonderful things that we have to look forward to, the, the audience is yours.
Well, good afternoon, City Council. Good afternoon, everybody. Yeah, we have four items on the closed session calendar today, which shows that the courts are, have reopened. So it's a lot of pent-up matters right now. So things are moving forward, which is a very good thing. So the City Council, at this point, is going to recess in a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine, regarding the following four existing pending litigation items: Vacation Rental Owners and Neighbors of Rancho Mirage, Rancho Mirage Vacation Rentals LLC et al. versus City of Rancho Mirage, Save Rancho Mirage versus City of Rancho Mirage, Hometown Colony LLC versus City of Rancho Mirage, and the Rancho Mirage Mobile Home Fair Practices Commission, and finally, Horizon Pacific Rancho Cove versus City of Rancho Mirage. So those are the four items I will discuss with the council in closed session.
All right, thank you, Steve. Well, now recess to the closed session. You will close this particular part of the agenda, and you will go to the separate link.